Yes. Stand for the lodge clusions. Good evening, Happy New Year. Starting with announcement regarding parking. Parking validation and bus passes are now available for commissioned workshops and meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from security on their way out. It will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in open and public manner. There's any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member. Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Okay. Moving on to today's discussion, today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda or agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Great. Onto the consent agenda. Do any members of the public have any questions about today's consent agenda? Is there any, is there any motion to approve today's consent agenda? Okay. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Moving on to public comment. The time limit for an individual to comment today is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us, and the board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. I have one name in front of me that I will try not to butcher, Stephen Marscato. You have three minutes. And, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. The microphone right there, sir.
Hello, Commissioners. Good day. This is my first time coming to a county commissioners meeting here, and I'm excited to see what y'all have to do. It already starts off, I have to say, I go to a lot of city council meetings. It's already started off in a very calm nature as opposed to that environment. So I think, I appreciate that, y'all for that, and I just, you know, want to say, look forward to talking with y'all, working with y'all individually on different matters that are important to me. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else have any public comment? For the board today? Seeing none. Okay. Good news. Moving on to our first presentation of the evening. I think that starts with you, Dane. Dane and Chip on Waste Pro.
Hello, Commissioners. Chip needs no introduction, but he's going to be presenting the information on the fee change for calendar year 24 this year for Waste Pro. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Just, okay, here. Just on our annual increase, as you know, the contract calls for a pay adjustment every year. And so I'll go right into it here. Thank you, sir. All right, so, per the contract, there's, there is two things, though, for this year's increase. There's been a tipping fee increase by the county, and so with that, there's 10 additional cents charged for, per month, per subscriber for every $1 increase, okay, which that'll be part of this year's annual increase. And also, too, according to the CPI, the increase was for 3.1% for this, this year. Okay? With that, that brings the subscriber fee increase total this year for basic service to 2366. You can see that our current fee is 2255. The CPI increase, the 3.1%, is an additional 70 cents per month, and the tipping fee increase is an additional 41 cents per month, which gives you a total of the 2366 per month for the basic subscriber service. And that's it. It's very complicated. Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
No questions for Chip? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to county manager's report. Avril.
Thank you, sir. I'll have Stoney Blevins, HHS Director, to come and make this presentation.
Evening Commissioners, members of the public. Stoney Blevins, HHS Director, just want to bring an update on the closure of a community development block grant and make some recommendations for the Commissioners. Just to give a little background, this was one of many grants that we applied for during the COVID-19 pandemic. We made our first application on October 6, 2020. We got an award letter that December, a couple months later, for a total amount of $900,000. However, we did not receive those funds for eight months, so it was quite a delay in the time we got our award letter and the time we were able to start distributing the funds in October. We processed our first invoices for assistance, and then there's a three-month window where you cannot process any more claims before the end of the grant, which ended on June 17th of this year. Just to tell you what we did with this grant, we were able to help 206 unique households with mortgage assistance or utility assistance for a total of just over $495,000. We do have a little over $400,000 that was unexpended during the grant, and it's a little rare for us not to expend a grant, so I just wanted to point out some of the factors that were being mitigated during this time. I do think the first one was the slow start because we were receiving quite a bit of other federal assistance. For example, we distributed about $13 million in federal emergency rental assistance at North Carolina Hope Grant. We also implemented our county mortgage assistance program, which has been pretty successful, in my opinion. We also could not help anyone who lived in the city of Asheville because the city of Asheville also received a community development block grant for coronavirus, and that meant that folks who lived in the city couldn't receive funds from ours. What we would propose at this point is that we close out the grant. What that requires, though, through the community development block grant, is a public hearing and also a vote by the county commission. So staff recommendation would be that we schedule those for the next meeting of the board.
And Stoney, I'm just curious, you mentioned the eight-month delay. Is there any way that they would allow us to continue with it since there was that delay in them getting the funds to us so that?
That's a great question. We actually explored that with them, like, could we extend the grant? And they were somewhat open to that. The challenge that we'll see at this point is the grant is so COVID-specific that we would have to tie assistance back to being caused by the pandemic, and at this point, we're so far removed from the public health emergency ending that we believe it will be almost impossible to find that tieback at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. It's just such a shame when there's that money that feels like we could have put to good use somehow to help the community, but I understand what you're saying, so thanks for sharing all those details of, of what happened with that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to new business. Haven't gotten rid of Dane yet. Come on back, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and Happy New Year. So, my name's Dane Peterson, Buncombe County Solid Waste Director, and I'm here this evening to request this board approve the proposed amendments to the solid waste ordinance you have before you. So we're talking about the ordinance amendments and some of the, some of the goals or the reasons why we felt this was important to modify or to change the language of the existing ordinance include being able to remove process specifics better left for franchise contracts. It's interesting in the ordinance, the way it is now, it almost stipulates like a mini contract within the ordinance, so we feel like it's, it behooves us to have that scope, specific terms, conditions within the contract that we have with the hauler rather than being in the ordinance. Removes redundancies already existing within general statute. So we think of the ordinance as that general framework that allows boards of commissions like yourself to grant franchise agreements. So we, we include that, but that, that authority does come from general statute, so it is in the ordinance as well. The amendments adjust verbiage to prevent conflicting language between the ordinance and future franchise contracts. Again, we, we want that to be clear that the, the control and document in a contract with us in a exclusive franchise hauler is the contract, and the specific, you know, how the contract's administered, penalties, those type of things, we feel like are, should be included in the contract, not in the, on the ordinance side specifically. Allows for flexibility in future franchise contracts based on evolving county and residential needs. Times change, things change, and things have certainly changed since a lot of the language that was incorporated into ordinance around the franchise agreement. At the time, I know there was a good reason for that, but we feel it's, it's time to update that verbiage. Specifically on the fee adjustments, I want to make sure that's in the contract side and not on the ordinance side so that that's understood, how fees are adjusted within a contract, within the terms, and that it's not necessarily a, a ordinance amendment in order to change fees. And overall, we, we hope that this simplifies the ordinance. Some examples of some of the specific changes we're proposing. Definition clarifications, so there was some terminology around detachable roll-off containers. We, really, the primary mechanism for collecting waste and recycling within the franchise contract on the residential side is the cart, so we wanted to find what those roll carts are. Obviously, we have different sizes, so we worked to define that in comparison to the way that it was stated currently as a detachable. It was a little confusing. Dumpster, there are different types of dumpsters, so we worked to define that. There, you know, whether it be a front-end dumpster, which is more for like permanent business, or a roll-off box type dumpster that is, you know, cabled off at a job site for a customer, wherever that is, and serviced from there, so give, give a little more clarity to the definition of dumpster. Changes for all references from household commercial establishments, small industrials, and residential property. So we felt like it was important to make a distinction between, you know, residential side with the franchise collection is, is that unincorporated area, residential properties, but in Buncombe, the, the commercial is, is open market. We have small businesses to big businesses, private, that compete for commercial accounts, so we wanted to make sure that that was distinct from the franchise agreements we're talking about with the residential to the open market that we have here in the county. Defining person, personnel refers to all customer types, bodies, and other legal entities. Refuse, we had some terminology in there like rubbish, felt like was really not needed, and we just really used the general statute terminology to, to update that. Remove section 6229 associated with penalties. Accountability metrics like we have in the current contract, like you will see proposed within any new contracts. Liquidated damages, things like nonconformance, when there are misses or leaks, things like that happen through the contract, there has to be those accountability metrics, but again, we think it's more important that it's on the contract side, spelled out clearly for the county and the hauler, rather than having something in the ordinance that is very specific and, and could be confusing. And some updates in section 6226. So this, this request is timely, as our target to issue the request for proposals for residential waste and recycling collection is tomorrow, to issue out the request for proposals. So we felt like this was appropriate to, to ask to make this amendment before we go out to bid, because the ordinance will be a, you know, a document that we send out to, to the bidders in this process, they understand what's in the solid waste ordinance, and we wanted, wanted to make sure that that's clear. So that's, that's kind of our, our sequence. Next step starts tomorrow with the bidding process, and I'll, I'll do my best to try to answer any questions you might have.
These changes make sense to me, especially putting the specifics in the contract going forward, so I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter 62 of the Buncombe County Code of Ordinances.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dane. Okay, next we have Sharon to help us discuss compensation for the ED of the Board of Elections.
Hi there. Happy New Year. And today I stand before you asking for some guidance in regards to some compensation requests. So before I go into the slide, just want to remind you all of the compensation study that we conducted back in June of, or finished in June of '22. And in that compensation study, we created a compensation philosophy that the county really had not had in, in the past. And really what that was, was looking at equity, internal equity, and then we looked at education and experience above minimum qualifications when we assigned wages. And at this time, we do not have a pay-for-performance program within the county. The closest we have to pay-for-performance is within the ordinance, and it's called longevity, and it says, "In lieu of merit, we will do longevity." Now, when it comes to the Director of Elections, the Director of Elections is not under, when it comes to a compensation philosophy, they have something a little bit different. This is where the, the Elections Director is under the North Carolina statute 16335, and what that says is that we must look at similarly situated counties that have similar, I want to make sure I get this right, similar population and registered voters. And again, that is different than our current compensation philosophy. So back in '22, the School of Board, UNC School of Business, they sent out a survey, and in the survey you'll see, it, it shows that Buncombe County's Election Director was at 101, and that was after we had provided the cost of living, and you'll see all the other counties that are below that. In the School of Government, when they look at your, your, your compensation studies, all that data is at least one year old, okay? So for year '22, they're, they're looking at '21 data, for year '23, they're going to be looking at '22 data. So, back in March or so, I was asked to review the Director of Elections compensation. At that point, we had not started our poll survey, and so we, actually, we hadn't started a poll survey, period, for anybody in the county, and with HR's capacity, we actually contracted an outside agency to assist us. They provided us some general feedback in November, and the information we received on the Director of Elections was, was only one, which was really disappointing. So what we did was, we went back and we actually called each one of the counties listed here and got their survey as of December of 2023. And so what you're seeing is the current population and the registered voters based on the North Carolina Board of Elections, and then the populations, and you'll see the, the links below. And you'll see in there, when I looked at the current population and registered voters to see which is, you know, the most similar to us, you'll see the, the ones above the gray line are the most similar to us based on numbers. You'll see on Johnston, it's actually highlighted because they're slightly below, but so close, I added it into that, that group, and you'll see that we have two outliers. We have Cumberland and we have Durham. Durham is significantly higher, and Cumberland is, is not significantly, but it's lower enough. And so when you look at those figures, we would, we would say that we are, you know, in line with similarly situated counties. So based on the findings, we look, it looks like the, the Director is currently within range of similarly, similarly situated counties. And so the, the, the ask is if you can provide me some, some guidance on where you would like me to go. And Chairman Quinn, would you like?
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jake Quinn, and I am proud to chair the Buncombe County Board of Elections. In the meeting packet that was prepared for today was included a resolution that was approved by the Buncombe County Board of Elections last June, and that resolution recommended increasing the, the annual salary of the, of the Director to a little over $107,000, and that would be before a cost of living adjustment. And in our resolution, we asked that that salary become effective on July 1st of 2023. I was contacted by county management shortly after our resolution was, was passed and set up the chain, and I was asked if I would be patient while the county checked some of the data, some of the data that had been included in the compensation study. And as eager as I was to have our board resolution considered by the Commissioners, I agreed to, to be patient and wait because Election Services and the Board of Elections are a member of the Buncombe County team, and we cooperate and collaborate with the county in every way that we can. After a while, though, and not hearing any progress on this, not, not any meaningful progress, and knowing that election law had changed significantly, and there was a very good chance that our Board of Elections could be replaced early in 2024 due to the result of the passage of Senate Bill 749, I became very eager to have this question put before you all because I viewed it as a, as a loose end that I wanted tied up before perhaps I left the Board of Elections. Court handed down an injunction recently that has delayed the implementation of that law, but I know better than to think that it has been settled once and for all, and I realize that really at any time, a new Board of Elections could be impaneled in Buncombe County. In any case, I wanted to get this before you. I met with the county manager and the Human Resources Director three weeks ago. We discussed the case. They told me that, that they did not support the proposal, and for some of the reasons that Ms. Burke just mentioned. A couple of things I want to point out to you, though. We heard about Buncombe County does not do pay-for-performance, does not do merit pay, and I understand that. One of the things that I have learned since joining the Board of Elections in 2018 is that so much of what we do is directed, guided by very specific legal language, and the compensation for the Elections Director is one such matter that is outlined in the law. But as I did my research, I learned, I got some more information about it. There was a court case just about 10 years ago in Guilford County, and the individual who had been the Elections Director sued, saying that the law had not been followed in that case, and that individual had been undercompensated. Now, the facts of the case are that, I'm, I'm, I'm not focusing on the facts of the case so much as I am the different elements that the court saw defined similarly situated counties. You saw numbers on population and voter registration, and those are, those are facts. But similarly situated, what does similarly situated mean? And what we found out was, it included items such as the percentage of the population that was registered, and the, the degree of, of transience of the population, the complexity of the electoral districts, the relative strength of the political parties, and level of dissension between or among them in the community. These are all very, very important factors. The comparable sophistication, politically and otherwise, of the population, and the degree of experience, effectiveness of work, and level of dedication exhibited by the Elections Director. I realize that Buncombe does not have pay-for-performance or merit pay, but it is clear that the Board of Elections is bound to consider the performance of the Director when making a request to set the salary. And in fact, our Director, who has been in the job now for four years, has stepped up to every single challenge that has come before her and has dealt with it in a highly effective fashion. We have a very smooth-running operation, one of the best in the state of North Carolina, if not the best, and our board passed this resolution last June. As an acknowledgement of that performance, and to see that our Director is fairly compensated in a manner that's consistent with North Carolina state law, but also that recognizes and respects the outstanding work that she does. Our board stands behind the resolution that we passed almost six months ago, and we do ask for your support acknowledging the high quality of work. I'll conclude by noting that if you approve this, our Elections Director will still be one of the two or three lowest-paid department heads in Buncombe County. And this is an individual who, on Election Day, is, is commanding a workforce of about 750 people, and I hope that you will consider that as you look at this request. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Quinn?
I don't have a question for Mr. Quinn, but I do have a question in general. Mike, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but when we start our presentation... Mike, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but when we start our presentation with law, I get excited. Even more excited when people talk about case law that most people have never heard of. But I needed some guidance on 16335. I see three prongs or three elements within that statute. The first being County Board of Elections recommendation, second being County Commission vote, and the third being commensurate with Directors in other counties in the state. Is that roughly correct?
I'm seeing it, yeah, three, but slightly different. Because first, we have the, I've lost it, of course. The Board of Elections has to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners shall approve commensurate with salary paid to Directors in other counties similarly situated and similar in population and number of registered voters. So, I think Mr. Quinn's point was, what is similarly situated? So, I think that is an important matter. But this board doesn't have complete discretion. I mean, it's tied, in my mind, not so much to what the county's compensation plan says, but what are similarly situated County Elections Directors paid across the state.
So, I appreciate that nuance because that's kind of what I'm trying to wrap my head around, what should be the most instructive element of this statute? Is it the similarly situated, because that's the one that we're hearing the most about, right? Is it the fact that the Board of Elections recommended it? What guidance can you give us in general about how that's played out for its other counties?
There's no other commas or ways to break down the statute other than the way it reads. I'm sure you're looking at it the same way, just as, and this, and that, and that. So, it's all a big bundle of sticks. And it's been a long time since I read the Guilford County case. But part of the case was, was that the Guilford County Director felt that they weren't being paid adequately. And I think that the proof for that case was two outliers, one being our former Elections Director and one somewhere else. But that was a case, that was a test of outliers, in my mind, as I recall.
Gotcha. So, I guess from your perspective, the question isn't solely whether the current salary is similarly situated, but whether or not the 115 would be as well? Because if that second one wasn't met, then that would inform what we do here today.
Well, I guess it depends. I mean, are we talking about a ballpark that's safe? I mean, if you're talking about a ballpark as to where I would advise leaving, I mean, you gotta, you gotta be within that ballpark. But it gets tricky, I think, when you look at Mr. Quinn's nuance about similarly situated. What does that mean? Now, he's proud of his electorate and rightfully so, we all are. But I think you just, you gotta look at the statute as to what it limits you to do. You can't go with what Ms. Burke's outliers were, I don't think, in Cumberland and the other county, which was much higher than that group that she had for the board.
And we don't have anything instructive about what happens to County Commissions who disregard the recommendations of their Board of Elections?
Not really, not outside the confines of that Guilford County case. But that was, I think those are different questions, though. I mean, I think the board is, my advice would be to stay within the bounds of what are similarly situated and, you know, based on population and number of registered voters. And there's not any real guidance on that.
The Court of Appeals left us without guidance. Kidding. Seems to happen very often these days.
Want to make sure I'm following the two attorneys in the room. The similarly situated, Mr. Quinn spoke to what, he gave some opinion on what that means. That's not in statute, though. Am I following you correctly?
It's not defined, that's correct. Just similarly situated, so.
It may be in case law.
Yeah, it might be in other jurisdictions.
Alluded to in case law.
I don't doubt what Mr. Quinn is related.
Right, right.
It might just be entirely the number of changes, how hard is it to get your ballots together? How many variations of ballots? Is that the same here as in Cumberland or Guilford? I mean, they're all different, they're all applying the same laws. But we have 100 different counties and they all apply them in different ways. That's just the fact of life. But, I mean, your only guidance is, you've got a recommendation of the Board of Elections. You need to approve it, but you've got to, if you're gonna, when you're looking to approve it, it's got to be based on commensurate, similarly situated counties and populations and registered voters. So, it's a different bundle.
As a point of, no, you, just as a quick point of reference, are there any other Department Heads and County Government whose salaries are set this way?
This is the only case law that I'm aware of.
The only Department Head where the resolution from a board would weigh into how a salary is set?
There can be other resolutions, but it's not based on a statute.
Right, okay, so the only one, the only Department Head within Buncombe County Government where legally.
That has that statute.
The input of the resolution from the board is a factor in how salary gets set.
Based on statutes, yes.
Okay, so that.
For the factors, yes.
So, this position needs to be treated, or this position out of the gates is treated differently than every other departmental head position?
Correct. It's a different animal, yes.
Thank you.
We look at those, and the one point I'll make is, we made sure that the counties were what Jake and them agreed to, that these were the similarly situated counties that we should compare to make sure that it is in line with those counties.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll just, I know there's other folks lined up to speak. One thing I will say is, given the relative legal density of this compared to some other things on our agenda, I feel like I might benefit from just some time to kind of sit with this and this question of the similarly situated piece. Not, obviously, the population and the number of registered voters are two data points. But there are another subset of factors that determine the role of an Elections Director and a Department that's overseeing elections in a given community. And I would be very open to taking some time to kind of digest some of this and have a chance to talk through. So, I just want to kind of float that as one scenario we might pursue as a board is kind of approaching this as a briefing, so to speak, and maybe looking at a vote at our next meeting.
I have a, I have a couple clarifying questions first. Thank you, Commissioner B. Trar. Can we go back and look at the compensation review slide, please? I think it's this. There's two different ones. There's a 22 and a 23.
So, this is the one, excuse me. This is the comp study that was done in December.
So, her current salary is 109.
Correct.
The resolution is asking for 107.
115.
The resolution that is linking.
Before, before the.
So, that's misleading, just to be clear.
No, I think to Jake's point, when the board did this, we had not yet done our cost of living.
Sure.
So, it would have been the base pay of 107 plus the cost of living.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I understand. It's just when multiple things are coming across in writing and you see a hard number right there, that is, I, it would have been much more helpful to have the resolution state exactly what the amount was versus having to infer it from all this other information. In light of the statute, my understanding is also, and Mr. Frue, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that some of this came about to ensure that Boards of Commissioners were not retaliating in a negative way against Elections Directors. And I think we have certainly proven in our support of Election Services, particularly over the last year or two, in regards to investing in the new machines that are needed, investing in additional staff, that we have certainly not proven ourselves to be retaliating against the Elections Staff in any, in any form or fashion.
I think that's a fair assumption. There's been a number of changes to the statute over the years, but I don't recall that provision changing.
Right.
And I can't really tell when it, how long it's been, just from looking at it right here.
Okay. And then, my second follow-up to that piece is, I'm not dug into every single word of the statute. I'm not going to lie to y'all. But is this only for the Director? Does this also open up the Board of Elections Board to come and ask for pay increases for other staff members within Election Services?
The statute says compensation paid to Directors of Elections in all counties. So, it doesn't read to other positions.
Okay. And I certainly feel like there's a lot in regards to Commissioner B. Trar, a lot here, that's heavy to dig into and to better understand this evening. So, thanks for clarifying, Mr. Frue.
And I'm also supportive of us taking some more time. I'm curious, though, while we're here, because it seems, the point to me is maybe not necess, some disagreement on this similarly situated, right, and what that salary is paid. And I'd like to try to understand where the differentiation's coming from, from county staff versus from Mr. Quinn with that, just so I understand. Because this has helped and the legal aspect of it really helped me to understand. Because at first, I was like, why is this coming to us? Because we usually don't get involved in pay of staff, and I like it that way. So, the legal aspect helps me with that. But I would like to try to understand where that differentiation is coming from around the similarly situated. If you would like to elaborate, and then Mr. Quinn could as well.
Yeah. Okay, Jake has to sign up. Go on, Jake.
Thank you. First, let me acknowledge the awesome support that is provided to the Board of Elections and Election Services by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. It is fantastic, we appreciate it deeply, we do not take it for granted. So, I just wanted to make that very, very clear. Similarly situated is tough. I mean, it is subjective. And what I was reading before about a County Board should consider additional factors where appropriate, including percentage of population, da-da-da-da-da. And this is from that Court of Appeals case, which was very instructive for me. I mean, I'm not an attorney, and since becoming Chair of the Board, I've had to become sort of an amateur attorney. This spiffy button right here is indication of my certification. I passed a certification examination for a County Board Member. And what it was, was a legal research exam. So, we had received training and that we learn how to work through the law for a very, very simple reason. We have no choice, we have to follow it. Every last person in this community expects us to follow the law, and we do. I wish I had brought my law book, it's this thick, and it, there's a whole lot at play. And every single day, when I'm working on this stuff, believe me, I learn something new. When I, when I started this position, I had no idea about 16335 and its impact on Directors' pay. And that's one of the things that our board has been trying to do. We go through the law, we find every single element where we have a responsibility to act proactively, get something done, and we make sure that we do it. And that's one of the reasons that this has come up with our board, because we are trying to make sure that we follow the law closely. So, when it came to similarly situated, I mean, what the heck is similarly situated? And that's where this Court of Appeals decision was so instructive for me because it reminded me about all the different ballot styles we have here. It reminded me how, I don't think anyone knows any better than y'all, how frequently our districts change and how confusing those changes can be. Those are the sorts of factors that we look at in determining whether or not counties are similarly situated. And I would speculate that Buncombe is going to have a more challenging environment than most because we seem to get targeted fairly regularly with changes in districts or changes in the way we are supposed to elect officials, whether it's out large or do it by district. We're currently still trying to sort out our school board election. These are the elements that make Buncombe a challenge. And we are very grateful to have an Elections Director who has demonstrated the ability to meet every single one of these challenges. So, a lot of words, I don't know if that really answered your question. But the population and voter registration, those are two statistics. There's a whole lot more. Those could be quantified. I mean, we could go count ballot styles for each of the jurisdictions and that sort of thing. And we have not done that. We could. And if y'all want to continue to think about this matter and to discuss it, I do want you to know that I am available, my colleagues are available to help you understand our thinking and get you to understand where we're coming from. I understand that Human Resources and the Board of Elections are coming at this issue from different directions. We have different missions, we do different things. We come to the job with different backgrounds and skill sets. And so, I understand the HR perspective on this, but that's not my perspective and that's not my board's perspective. We want to make sure that we're following North Carolina general statutes all the way through. And it's really that simple. So, questions?
Yeah, one clarifying question. So, are you in, are you in, are you disagreeing with the counties that are being suggested to be used, the Johnston, New Hanover, Union, Cumberland, Durham?
In the packet was the resolution that our board adopted back in June. And Exhibit A of that resolution does the peer grouping for you. I mean, I realize that HR did their thing, but we've got four counties, Cumberland, Durham, New Hanover, and Union. Why those four? Because they're all within plus or minus 25% of Buncombe's numbers on population and voter registration. We thought, we thought we'd keep it nice and simple. There's four of them. When you saw the slide of what Election Directors were being paid in those counties, I want you to know, it was this slide. If you take those four counties, the average is $125,415. We are asking for a sum that is considerably less than that. Now, that 125,415, sure enough, it's got the outliers, it's got Durham, and it's got Cumberland. But when your total population is four counties, throwing out the outliers is probably not a statistically valid approach to take. So, we just used the four, you know, you took the average, it's $125,000. It looks like what we are requesting is $115,000, and we hope that you will consider it strongly.
It feels like there's a flaw in the statute because what we don't know is how long these other Elections Directors have been in their positions and if that has factored in, in their own respective counties to their pay. I understand the statute says we can't do that, but we, there's so much we don't know about how those other salaries were determined. There seems to be a major flaw in this determination, from my viewpoint.
We know the tenure of all the Elections Directors. The University of North Carolina School of Government Survey that's conducted regularly.
What we have right here in front of us does not give us that information.
Gives us that information.
There's so many more questions. I am in no way prepared this evening to make a decision on this because there, we've raised even more questions than I think we had coming into this evening.
Commissioners, I appreciate your acknowledgement of the complexity of this. Believe me when I tell you, I have spent dozens and dozens of hours working on this, contacting HR offices across the state to collect data, looking through the law, speaking with my colleagues. Thank you for your time, thank you for your interest and your care. Appreciate it very much. Anything we can do to help you with additional information, even if it's just information about our thinking process and our perspective, we would be happy to share it with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Avril, did you have anything else to add?
I'm hearing that you want to bring us back next week.
Yeah.
Is there anything specifically you want us to add to this, to bring back?
One data point I would be interested, go ahead, Al.
You know, one of the concerns that I have, and thank you, Jake, we appreciate it. But we've got to understand here, I know the state law, but also, let's think of precedent. You know, I agree with Terry. You know, I agree with Terry. I never feel comfortable when we are getting involved with the salaries of employees, because that's why we have a county manager, that's why we have the staff. But on the other hand, I also realize what the Board of Elections, what they do, and how it's different. But we've got to, let's talk about this. We need to look at this, because this is going down, I don't want us to go down a slippery hill here. I want us to make sure that we do the right thing for everybody involved. And Jake, let me ask you one question before you leave. How long, I know the director's been with us for four years.
That's right.
But how, did she work for us before?
Director Duncan joined the staff of Buncombe County Election Services in 2015.
Okay.
And when Trina Parker-Valez.
Right.
Announced her retirement in 2019, we had, I, I, one more thing I've got to tell you. We had the best support from Buncombe County Human Resources, doing a nationwide search for a new elections director. Now, we ended up hiring internally, but we seriously looked at external candidates as well.
That's what I thought, even. I thought I remembered.
And Director Duncan was hired, I believe it was like middle of January in 2020, and then she dove right into probably the easiest election in the world in 2020 in the middle of a pandemic.
Thank you, Chairman Quinn.
Thanks.
I think just one data point I'll just throw out there, just to stare back at the statute that says similarly situated. I think knowing what, you know, the quantity of ballot styles that Buncombe County has, I think that would be an interesting, you know, objective numeric data point that we could look at. If we are an outlier or not, I have no idea, but that would be interesting to see, the quantity of ballot styles in, in comparison to these other counties.
I agree with that. And I'll also ask, Mr. Frue, could we get that case site, just a one review and then two, maybe get the full exhaustive list, the factors that were considered there? I know it's a different case. I know it's a different situation. But jokes aside, if there is any Court of Appeals guidance about what they've looked at previously, I would like to have that in front of us before we make.
Like brief format?
Even if it's bullet points.
Okay, sure.
It sounded like there are at least six or seven things, so.
I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
Any data points?
There's consensus to table this until next time.
Right. Any other data points that I might need to provide?
I think just, yeah, some clarity between, like, the differentiation between what, yeah, Chairman Quinn and, and staff, so that we can really weigh that out.
And I'm sorry, Mike, one last one for you, if you don't mind as well. If you can give us any guidance on any kind of, I know that it's not, it's going to be somewhat unique, because there's a difference between this situation and most other employees, but for employees that are paid pursuant to statute or have certain things like this pursuant to a statute, could you give us any guidance next meeting about how often recommendations are provided and/or how much power we have to, to deviate from those? Just to give me some legal peace of mind about if you weren't to follow what a board that's recommending a salary does, what would be the consequence of that? Because that would be helpful for us, knowing how much runway we have, in my mind.
I understand your question, Commissioner Moore, but I don't think that's been litigated or ruled on by the courts at all.
Not, never in the Fourth Circuit entirely?
Let's double check with the Guilford County case, and I'll include anything that's in those bullet points.
I'd appreciate that. I'm, I'm sure North Carolina has very little, but if we have any guidance across the country, it would be instructive. Thank you.
Could we also get turnout data? Voter turnout data? Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? Avril, do we need to make any motion to table this, or it's just tabled by lack of action?
I think.
Your bylaws, you can't table, but you can defer action to a date certain.
Okay. That's what I meant. Okay.
And that's January 16th.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Deferring it to our second meeting in January?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Melissa Moore, next gen item. You're not Melissa Moore.
I wondered.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a follow-up item from your December 5th briefing. I have a quick summary of the discussion that we had last month, and then we'll try to answer any new questions that you may have since then. Just a quick review, our investment options as a North Carolina local government are highly restricted by state law, so there are very few options. This plus multiple and kind of ongoing interest rate volatility all, over the last several years, has us looking more closely at our cash management strategies and looking to leverage and maximize those, those limited options that we do have. The NC class investment pool has been identified as a fairly new option that is available to us for that investment. The NC class pool was officially established in the spring of last year, so April 12th, I believe, was the formal date for that. The founding members were the Town of Hope Mills, Lincoln County, City of New Bern, City of Rocky Mount, and Gaston County. And I have the full current membership on the next slide for your review and some discussion, if you'd like to. There are several features of the pool that interest us as staff. In last month's briefing, I mentioned that interest is compounded and reinvested daily, which I think is unique to this pool and has some potential to accelerate earnings. There's no minimum investment requirement, so even if you all approve joining the pool today, we have no commitment to invest funds if it's not right for the current investment environment at any given time. And selfishly, I think this pool's fund structure is going to simplify some of our investment accounting, so that helps my team do our work a little bit easier. So we'll take it if we can get it. The pool's fiscal and service objectives also align with our investment policy and best practices. This slide is the current membership of the pool as of December 20th, so fairly recently. Notably, and to a question from Commissioner Whitesides from last month, Mecklenburg has joined since our last discussion, so that adds another top 10 in population and budget since that conversation. I'm also aware that the cities of Raleigh and Asheville are in discussion and consideration of joining the pool as well. If you approve joining this pool, we would remain a member of the North Carolina Investment Pool, so the pool that you all approved establishing back in 2020, 2021. I believe that there are other units that will likely be joining both pools as well. I don't think that this is an either-or conversation. I think the, the timing of joining is really just where there are existing investment and investment advisory relationships. So I think there's going to be a point where many local governments across the state are a part of both pools and put their cash wherever it has the best relationship and yield for any given moment in the investment environment.
And I want to say, that caught my eye, where it's compounded and invested daily.
Certainly, yeah. That was, um, yeah.
I see why, yeah.
So there are two items for your consideration today. There's a resolution to join the inter-local agreement with the current members of the pool. An inter-local agreement is one of the requirements under state law for creation or membership in a, in a commingled investment pool. And then there is an agreement to join the indenture of trust, which outlines the structure and the responsibilities associated with the pool. As mentioned earlier, we would take on very little risk in joining this pool. There's no investment minimum requirement for members, and it's extremely easy for us to withdraw our funds if we were investing but decided to back out and, and use other vehicles. So this is just one more investment tool to add flexibility to our portfolio and our options.
Locally, do we have any rule as to how, how much we'll invest in the pool? Do we have a ceiling or anything like that?
I would need to go to our investment policy, but within our investment policy, we do outline certain limits on the precedence of any type of specific.
Right, okay. I'll go ahead and read that, yeah.
And I'm guessing the daily compound and reinvestment is one of the reasons you want to invest in this pool versus the one that we're already in, but are there some other reasons as well?
So I think that's the biggest one. I think it's a question of scale, so we're going to have to feel out the relationship and the funding. We do have direction from our director, Moore. If we are instructed to join, we would begin to fund immediately and kind of feel out what that looks like. But some of the other things that I mentioned earlier, they seem to have really strong communication tools. They've been very responsive to us in our relationship so far, obviously considering joining. And then the accounting tools, I'm excited about that. So their accounting structures, I think, would allow a lot of ease of management for us, and that helps us provide quicker turnaround and, and reporting to you all, a better transparency and, and communication tool for us that rolls up to you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, as, as Mason, who wants to say Melissa, sorry, as Mason mentioned, this is not an either-or. We would invest in both the one we started in 2021 as well as this, as also the capital management trust. So that would give us some different avenues to put money in as we invest the idle funds.
2021 was the Wake County partnership? Okay.
We also have a separate investment advisor that kind of helps us more proactively dig into the market. We currently have an RFP out for those services, so that's another leg of, of cash management that we're exploring.
Quick question for you, Mr. Frue. Do we require two different motions, one to approve the investment pool and the other to approve the agreement to join the trust?
I believe that's all contained in, in the resolution to approve. It has all the elements necessary.
Okay, so one motion is fine. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the resolution in inter-local joint agreement to join the North Carolina class investment pool.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Good evening. We have a budget amendment for a state lottery project for Buncombe County Schools, North Buncombe High School softball field upgrades. And this budget amendment establishes a budget of $725,000 for the lottery-funded project of the construction of the said softball field. This project was approved for application by the board on June 6th, and design was approved on August 15th.
Motion to approve the request?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I think we do have some board appointments. First is for the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board.
Motion to approve Joey Moore?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. HRC. I'll make the motion to appoint Celeste Gorman. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to our reports on boards and commission. Holidays, I'm not sure there's much to report. Anyone have anything?
I'll say briefly, on early childhood education, we had wonderful staff working very diligently over the holiday and beforehand to address the situation that came up that's not uncommon across Western North Carolina and childcare centers closing. We did have one of our local centers indicate that they could not continue with the funding that they were receiving at that level, but amazingly had several partners step up willing to help us fill in the gap there, have some tentative board approval to, to move forward with one of those partners to make sure that we're filling that need in our community. So just wanted to flag that as one, thanks for our staff, Rachel Nygaard, leading the charge over the holiday season about that, to get us in place going into January, and to, just to put that on everyone's radar, is early childhood education is going to continue to be one of those areas that we need to meaningfully invest in going forward.
We had a busy December in terms of the group that's focused on planning around a high-access shelter. So following the joint meeting we had with city council, that group met twice in December to kind of continue drilling down on best practices and evidence-based models from research of, of sites around the country, and also, excuse me, a meeting with the, the new settled CEO of Homer Bound, as well as Dr. Suchin Shukla, who's a contract physician with the county around opiate issues, just to really hear their perspectives on the type of services and the facilities that, that we should be considering. So progress continues on that front, and just want to share that quick update.
Anything else? Okay. Moving right along, a couple announcements. January 16th at 3:00 PM, our Commissioners Briefing will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Following that, on January 16th at 5:00 PM, a regular Commissioners Meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Mr. Frue, is there a need for a closed session of any kind? Yeah. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.